I call this meeting to order. Document the time at 6:33. And if you would stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you and welcome. First pass, Tori. I'll pass the baton to you to get us into mindset for this evening.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna sit and just remind ourselves of why we're here, for who, and at what cost.
All right, agenda review and adjustments. Have a couple to start with. I'd like to add a negotiations update to an executive session for labor relations update. And just a note on the... In the consent agenda, there is a repeal of a policy for promotion and retention. That's gonna become procedure. We talked about that the last time. So it was in our documentation. And then the last piece, there was one more on the front side here. So we still don't have a final point on the charge for the water main break. Those, that is still in negotiation at this point. So that one, we will not touch when we get there. And then there's just one small typo on the second page of the agenda, and that is under the date on the PTO-sponsored I Am From Here film. This is October 18th at 5:30. It's actually 6:30 in the PAC. Oh, April, sorry, 18th. Anything else? Any other adjustments to the agenda? All right. With that, turn it over to Sean for intro.
Yes. So we are fortunate to have our Iraqi Arabic-speaking liaison, Abir Al Zubaidi. Zubaidi? And always just say Abir. Who is gonna come and talk to us as part of our series from our cultural liaisons on the culture of Iraq. And so I'd welcome you to come and present to us. Abir?
And I don't know if there's anything else, Kirsten, maybe?
No, the screen's a little small. Should I hit the lights to help with the visual?
You have a clicker. Or we could move it into the, what, a little bit back a little bit more?
Um, we'd have to move it a little bit.
You got a little bit more room on a screen to do that.
Darkness might be tough for the video, though, huh? Yeah.
All right.
Okay, hi everyone. My name is Abir Al Zubaidi. I'm Arabic-Homish liaison. I'm originally from Iraq, Baghdad. And I have been here for, this is my 11th year, working at Wineski for fifth year. So today I'm gonna talk to you about the Iraqi's culture. And if you have any question with any slide, welcome to ask. And I will talk after that presentation about the Iraqi's culture, a little bit about our community in Wineski. So my country is Iraq, located in Western Asia, and it's Middle East. Iraq is bordered by six countries. To the north is Turkey, to the south Kuwait, to the east Iran, and to the west Syria. To the southwest is Jordan and Saudi Arabia. Iraq is the... Size of Iraq is close to California, and the population of Iraq is 37 million citizens. The most important thing about Iraqis is the big two rivers, the flow from Turkey toward the south to Shata Al Arab, where is Kuwait and going to the Arab Gulf. Iraq has 10% of the petroleum resource in this world. And it's really something very rich make the country, but for real, it's not. It's bringing all the problems in this world to this country. So it's now good luck to have a good petroleum in the country. The physical geography of Iraq is made of combination. It's between rocky sandy desert in the west area, and it's between mountains that cover 170,000 square miles in the north, and a farming area between the two rivers valley in the middle. This is the first, one of the Uvrest, one of the rivers. And the other one is the Tigris, which is those two include between them, there is really a big farming area. Kind of less than the north going to the south, but the western of Iraq is the desert. Language and religions. So the ethnic group that we have in Iraq, they are Arabs, Kurds, Turkmen, Ashurians, Shabaks, and Armenian. All these peoples, they talk kind of different language. The Arabic is the major language for all the country. And the Kurds talk in Turkish, but there is another accent too. It depends on which part of Iraq you are. For the religions, we have in general Islam's, it's most of the people, but we have Christianity, we have Mandaids, we have Azidis, we have all the others sharing the 3% of the country religions. So this is, this part is about the history of Iraq. I wanted to know this because it's help you to understand the people from Iraq. It's really deep meaning for that. I know it's all history, it's not happening, but that's why you will feel why Iraqi's people, they are so proud of themselves. You will say like, what's happening? That's what happened in the history. So the first law in the world made by Hammurabi, the king of Babylonian. And then the first school is Al Mustansiriya. We still have this school, really very ancient school in Baghdad. And we have a university has the same name, so Al Mustansiriya College or University. The first hanging garden in Babylonian. And then you have the first writing system in the world I'm talking. And then the first mathematics and the first study of astronomy. That's in Asian, not now.
Hi, my name is Dr. Andrew Jamison. I'm here at the Melbourne Museum to tell you about an exciting exhibition, The Wonders of Ancient Mesopotamia. So the ancient Mesopotamians are credited with many inventions that we still use today, including the division of time and the 60-second minute. So off the top of my head, I'm going to try and list some of the inventions of the ancient Mesopotamians in 60 seconds. It starts with farming, agriculture and irrigation, tools like the plow and the hoe. This generated an agricultural surplus, bringing about important developments in things like writing and account keeping. We see the introduction of the wheel, carts to transport these commodities. And this led to developments in boats sailing and trade on the Tigris and the Euphrates. We start to see the emergence and growth in cities becoming large urban centers. And associated with these places, an increase in architecture, larger monumental stone-built buildings. We see kings and rulers dominating these large urban cities. This flows into developments in such things as metallurgy, astronomy and astrology take off. We see literature, epic poetry and art. We also see important developments in things like science, mathematics, law. These all represent foundations of Western civilization that have come down to us from ancient Mesopotamia.
I feel that very interesting because these clays board, I touch them in my life. They are really there, and you can find them and see them on the walls of the old buildings. Wars of Iraq. So I'm one of the Iraqis that born in Iraq. I born like end, mid of 70s. When I, like in elementary school, I start seeing war, and it's never end, never stop. So the first war was between Iraq and Iran, and it continued from 1980 to 1988. And when this wars done, we thought, wow, we reached the safer place now. We don't know it's gonna start a new series of new wars that we don't know when it's gonna end. And then the second war is the Gulf War. We're, we're like, I was in the high school in that time. And then the Gulf War start 1990 and end 1991. And then followed by the Desert Folks, and then Iraq War. And it's not, we, in general, if you look, yes, it's done, but for real, it's not done. Iraq is still suffering a lot. I have sister living there, I have family living there. It's not safe anytime, and I don't feel like the conflict and violence gonna be end. They try a lot, but as you know, when you have patrol, everybody want this patrol for himself and this divided the countries. School and education. The education system in Iraq, it's start before the elementary. We have a preschool, kindergarten, early daycare, and then elementary school. It's from first grade to sixth grade, and then secondary from seventh to ninth, and then high school from 10th to 12th. And then higher education, there is universities, college and association degrees, and then masters and PhD and everything. Education in general, Iraq is very, very important thing for all the family. It doesn't matter if you are poor family, can afford it, don't afford it. All the public school are free. Unless you have like some school as a private, this is very rare choices for the family, but we have it, yes. But schools and education is very important for all the families. After the war, that shifting little bit, and I really surprised when students come here and they told us, oh, I didn't have a lot of schooling. Like, I leave school by 10:30 or something. It's not the real strong system now. So in general, these facts about the education system in Iraq, in the rural areas, most of the girls, they don't go to school. That, not in the big cities. That's really in the rural, where it's hard to go to schools, where there is one school in the town, and it's really hard to go there. And some positive achievements happen after the war, but it doesn't continue. They build a lot of schools, but these schools, no one can afford that and make it really available and working for the other people. Like, need supplies, need support, teachers need support. Everything is hard. It's not easy. The ongoing violence is posing new challenges in the country, central area. Most of the schools get destroyed. So the number of schools is less than before. So the school day is get shortened. Instead of you going from eight to two, which is normal for middle school and high school, now all the schools go, most of the schools go from eight to 12, and then there is other group coming from 12 to four. And they switch every three days, which is, that wasn't happening in the capital, like in Baghdad. Maybe happening in the other states or in other part of Iraq, but not in Baghdad. Now it's happening in Baghdad because less number of teachers, less number of schools, supplies and support. Many parents have, they have to choose between the safety or sending your kids to school. I'm one of these parents. I choose not to send my kids to school, 2006, and I kept them for a month at home. And that become dangerous too. All my town was really, really very dangerous. I'm one of last three families in this town. And I said, no, I have kids, I want to care about them. But until becomes very dangerous, so we leave the country. Exciting part about Iraqi's culture. Food is number one favorite for any Iraqi's person. Don't tell me there is anyone from Iraq don't like foods. And everybody, almost all the women, they know how to cook very well. And some men too, they cook very well. The famous thing, the kebab, which is, they called it here in America, shish kebab. And the stew with bamia, it's okra with lamb meat. I know, if you say, oh, that's not excited, but it is very excited, I'm telling you. And dalma is the bread leaves stuffed with the meat and rice and all veggies. Falafel, most of you familiar with the falafel. And then kebey, which is a dough stuffed with the meat. And then mezghof, which is the famous Iraqi fish dish. No one can do it in the Middle East, just the Iraqis. Especially with that, because we have two rivers and a lot of fish. And they do in a special way. They grill it around the fire. So they put the wood sticks in the fish, and they keep it there for like at least two hours. Slowly grill it. Holidays. For the holidays, we have a lot of holidays, but the major things, the major holidays is for... So Eid al-Fitr, which is after Ramadan, after fasting 30 days. We have Eid for three days. This is the shorter one, they call it Eid al-Fitr. And then the Christmas, this is, 2018, it become officially national holiday. Before, it wasn't national holiday. It was just for the Christian people. Now it's all-country holiday. And then Eid al-Athha, sacrifice, feast of sacrifice. That's when people, they go to Mecca and they do their jobs there after 12 days, and then we have a big holiday. When they come back, it's sacrificing for Ibrahim and Ismail story. And then Easter, that's what happening, the springtime is very lonely time in Iraq. And most of the north, we called it like two-spring's mother nature, because they have, in the fall, it's like spring, and in the spring is spring again. I hope you enjoyed it and learned something you not know about Iraq before.
Should I go back here?
Oh, she's got more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was wondering, you were gonna talk about...
She watched videos and she listened to your questions already.
Okay, all right. Oh, I'll sit tight.
So I listen to your questions for my friends and colleagues here. All your questions about how to make a good communication between Wineski's community as a citizens and the school members and its students, teachers, everywhere. So from my experience here in Wineski, we always say, all are welcome. So I'm thinking about the entrance of our school, if we making really welcoming for the people who first arrive here. I have a picture in my mind, when the first family came here, they just looking around, what's happening? I said, if, if we can make and improve this looking, they looking for something from their country, that would make them very welcome. So I'm thinking about the flags, pictures, arts, something very important, the special food recipe from their country is putting in the lobby, that would really make me feel, oh, wow, they know about me.
First impressions?
Other helpful idea, the director for the school, I did told Christine about that, and we try to make something. It's like some rule, our school rules, how to put it in a small brochure, easy pictures and easy language for the new family. They can figure out what's happening in our school. The more that we give them idea about our school, our rules, how we communicate here, what we're doing, that's really helpful for everyone, for us and for the new families. I'm talking specifically about the new families, which is, I feel they need more support.
Do you want to tell them about the video project that Sarah Forbes is doing?
Yes, yes. One of our ELL teacher, she tried to make a video that we talk for the new families. And she talk in English, and then we gonna talk, repeat the same sentences in our language. And we gonna use this videos for welcoming the family and what they are, the first arrival, some ideas about our school, ELL work, what's happening, and how they learn here.
Is that necessarily gonna be for the first time in school, or just as they arrive in the city, it will be available? I'm thinking that some point, if you arrive early in the summer, and you have to wait all summer to see something like that.
We can, we can do that, but I think it was...
It's something that once we have it done, we'll be able to post it online.
Okay, you can see it anytime, anywhere.
Knowledge for all. So this point is really focusing about, I feel like it's our responsibility to make this community glowing. It's not one person. What I mean by glowing is standing up for everyone in it. When I teach parents, yes, it's part of my responsibility, but I find out from my experience, I don't just need to teach parents, I need to teach teachers. I need to teach the students that already here in the school, and the students that coming new to our school. So it's all connected. It's not just one person responsibility, it's not just, oh, we have liaison, they can solve this. We try very hard, and I wish I have that magic fix everyone, and tell everyone about everyone, and make a good connection. But I feel like if we teaching all together, we help each other, to respect each other. And it's very important if we separated between the students too. We did a good job with the teachers, and the teachers that try to reach and learn. Everybody in the school as adult, they feel the responsibility, but we face it in the classroom, our student is not in that level yet. So knowledge for all is a key. Volumen culture. Some of our students, they are shy, and they don't want to talk about where they are from. And there is many, many reason. If you are a teenager, or if you are third grade, or a high schooler, you're gonna hesitate to talk about where are you from, and why you want to know about me. But if they see one teacher talking about their culture, and like proud of it, oh, they all copy, and they all come to you and say, oh, I'm from your country. You're talking Arabic? You are Muslim? Yes, I am. And they now start opening and talking about their country. Even so, their teacher spent with them like two years, three years, but they don't have any idea where they are from. Or never tell their teacher. They know they are from Kenya, but originally they are not from Kenya, or they are from Jordan. All people from Iraq move to Jordan or Syria. They say, we are from Jordan. They hesitate to say, we are from Iraq. You know this idea? When we make, like, make them proud of their cultures by little, small ideas. If we, this my ideas, I'm like, if we are gonna be proud of the Iraqi food culture in the cafeteria one day, if we're gonna be like proud of the Iraqi games culture, after-school activities or something, that's really gonna help them to be proud and confident. New family challenges, a lot. Not just what I put here, it's just I had ideas, like I was thinking last night, I'm like, what is their challenge? I couldn't count them. A lot of challenges they have. Some of them, they are not open about it or told, talk about it. Some of them, they are very open, and they ask for help. It took them a time. All the families, at the beginning, they don't ask for help. They just deal with it until they are like, we need help. And we keep telling them, tell the school, tell the manager, tell the VRP person, talk to them. There is, of course, there is a solution, but it's still hard for them. One of the challenges is the housing, and how many times they need to change the housing. We all suffer from this problem here in our district. We work very hard with the students, and suddenly, we move. We're gonna change the school. The student, they don't want to change, but the parents, it's another financial challenge, so they have to change. Jobs, finding a job. I know some families, they changed their job so far, like 12 times. It's a lot. That's the parents, what happening to the kids, it's all affect them. DCF and parenting in USA, that's a big challenge for every single family here. Every single family is different cultures, different understanding. They have no idea. And Christine always try to help that by inviting DCF people here, explaining for else. We have a lot of meetings. We separate the news, but still, it's challenging for them. We need to put more work. Transportation, it's a bigger problem. We are as a liaison, we definitely every day get asked to drive their kids because they have after-school activities, before-school meetings, doctor appointments. We do that all the time. And it's a, I don't, I want to do it, but I have other things to do too. Communications. By communication, I meant communication between families, school, between teachers and the parents, between students and parents, students and their teacher. It's really missing communication between all these works idea, and especially when they are high schooler, they have their laptops, they have work in the school, parents has no idea what's happening. We did try to give them some classes in the evening to teach the parents, but still, language is a barrier, teaching and education is a big barrier. They care. They care is a bigger problem. They wish our school has a full day, they care, because all the preschool is just half-day. All the moms, they say, we cannot find a job, because the three hours, it doesn't make sense. I find a job for three hours and come back. There is other family try to find another, they can in the area, and start job, but it's hard, because they pay a lot. She worked for two months, and then she stopped, she said, we cannot afford it. And there is more. But this is why I can't have with. It's really when I choose the frame, it's looming, it's just like in here. It's not really a lot of ideas I have, but I'm just sharing what I think about. Thank you so much.
You helped really focus in on the questions that we would ask, which is popping up, and you were super clear about that, which is wonderful.
You also have very good headings of like topic areas that we should be using now in message. And I'm happy that Christine lots here, and hoping that in ways, we can also use some of those headings to message with the city on this open, large community. The one thing that I kinda wanna share, in thinking about that daycare issue, that, you know, to show that the school board is really thinking hard about it, is I hope you can bring back to the community that you work with, that we're trying to enlarge and double the size of the pre-K with the, and the purpose of that is to have full-day daycare. And if you can tell that to your... Preschool, preschool, sorry. Preschool, a little different, but at least it can cover some of that area.
And full-time is part of the plan?
Yes.
Great.
And if you haven't heard that, would you please send that message back to the community as we're talking about this new capital planning project that we're hoping to pass in this town? Is because there has been a lot of intentionality and thought on that. But thank you. I mean, your slides are amazing, and this is more for us to think. Like, we've had three great cultural things, and I'm trying to figure out, is there a way that we can pull these, these sections out and turn it into another video, like, for our website, for the city, for us? And then the other side, I, when you were talking about building those picture manuals for the school, I heard flexible pathway projects. I heard, like, that's what I heard.
So the video project that Sarah Forbes, one of our elementary ELL teachers is working on, she's talked with the I-Lab, because there are a lot of kids in the I-Lab doing video editing projects, so she's hoping to help get some of them to do the footage and help with the editing, to cut down, you know, the work and share that, and have that be a project.
And Sophia, I hope you can tell, like, your fellow classmates, these aren't projects that, like, we're coming up, just a big projects to do that are, right? The authenticity of the project.
Projects that we're asking, and I'm hoping you're hearing this from the community liaisons, that these would really matter and be helpful in bringing our community even closer. If you can just relay that message, so that when we come up with these projects, that they're hearing it, you can help advocate for it. And I'll guarantee you, those are great projects for any job in the future, college-going, Vermont Tech, being able to put that on the... Being able to put that on the resume, it will pop. So, I'll.
Yeah, but it'd also be interesting from the student's perspective of how they would want to show our school and how to welcome into our school, you know, or what, where they see some things that we could tighten up and shift and make better also as they're doing this project. We need student views in this, you know, yeah.
There are projects in the Culture and Community class where they're showing off their cultures. So some projects are they're showing their dancing and then they're trying to add a culture fashion week. So, that's what we're trying to do in, yeah, in Culture and Community, we're trying to get our community to be more connected.
But I do hope like when you hear the comments from the cultural liaison that like, it matters to the little children, to the other younger schoolchildren in our district, that having someone that's proud about their culture that out there has that impact. I've noticed that at the university level with like the clubs that I advise on other, but y'all are really the leaders of our district, too.
Love the idea of the lobby and the welcoming, that first, that first touch is.
Because I feel when he gets a special inside, we have a special heart, so let's show it.
One of the discussions we had with Dalib the last time was how to reach out to the Iraqi community and become a bit more engaged. And I mean, his primary thought was just, you know, just reaching out to people. But it has to be really intentional upfront to do that. And do you have any ideas on how those things might be more easily happen?
We have really a good number of them when we did some meetings here in the high school for about the high, their graduation students. They care about the education, they care, but when they came here and they feel there is not really continuous happening, they stop coming.
When things weren't getting done?
Yes.
Where they stopped, so they were coming to meetings?
They were coming to meeting, like, I think two years ago. I have a really a good number of Iraqis and involved with us in school. But suddenly, it's like, they don't feel like, we invite them for the classes for the parents and then they find out we offer them a young kids website and books, which is, that's where you start. But they don't accept it, like, oh, we're adults, why using? They don't accept the idea, you know?
Okay.
So they stop coming to DC classes. I told them, that's what we start, you start, if you don't have language, so you have to start with a low level. But they don't accept it, you know, it's like some sensitivities make them feel, oh, it's not worth it.
But since they are invested in education, it would seem like be us to shape.
Now they feel that their kids has some troubling in the school and they have no idea what's happening. We're really working very hard in high school and middle school to get parents involved. So I try to push a beginning of the year, please come and see, please come and. They don't feel it at the beginning, but now they see their kids, they are behind. And I told them, do you remember these classes we're offering for parents and you guys, you don't come, you don't learn about school? That is what we're doing. We're doing kind of a series of classes to benefit the families so you can affect your kids' work in the school. They don't put it together after a while. And now they, she sent me and text me, put my name in DC classes, it's happening again. It's need times, all the work need times. But I want, I think like if we are more clear and give them feeling, yes, we care about your education, we care about your information, we want you to learn about our school. If we taking really serious steps, we can do that.
So you're here on a fairly regular basis, because that's part of what you do. So just keep in mind that if there are, if there are things that we can do differently, don't hold up the ideas, bring it forward and, you know, we may, may not be able to do things, but to understand what things are out there.
Our school is really trying very hard. But the problem is the Iraqis community, they have some education. They are not coming from camp and parents have nothing. Most of the parents, they try to study by their own now, like even going to college. And almost of them, they have like degrees and now they want to finish, want to improve their education. It's hard for them because of the language. So when I invite like someone has a bachelor's and tell him, oh, sit here and read like a young kids books, it's hard for him to accept it because he's already maybe can read, but not as fluently or professionally. Compared to the other cultures, we have to offers low levels because people, they don't have any education before. So this big difference between two cultures or more than other cultures, it's cause some problem. They don't accept it, oh, I invite the mom and dad and they sit with their kindergarten or first grade and read the same book. Some of them, they try. Some of them, they are very willing, even they let their young kids to read for them.
It must be very difficult, I would imagine, for some families who had some degree of economic wealth and status in their, in your country and then to come and kind of start again and feel like.
Well, not future in front of them, can I do that teaching?
Yeah.
I can, I can, but not as a master, as a master teacher, I'm doing that as a liaison.
That is a recurring issue that we see, that we have advocated for at the state level. You know, we have many and even, you know, many on staff, but many in the county who were licensed teachers and professionals. I mean, I know a guy who was a dentist, I know another who was a lawyer. And for them to be properly licensed in the state of Vermont to practice law or to become a teacher would require years and years.
Starting back over.
Yeah.
Again.
There's not a path for a veteran professional in one of those areas to be able to get back into the profession.
Hal Colston, our state legislator is working on a bill to kind of remove those barriers. And if there's something that that community can connect with Hal, really recommend at that level to put that, put a face and a voice to the issues that Hal is talking about because.
Because it's an unnecessary barrier.
Yeah.
Unnecessary. It just hasn't been thought of before, right? Yeah.
He wouldn't be chasing it if he didn't know there was an issue, but if he had some very straight.
Because we can look at the accreditations of the colleges of these degrees of coming, like, it's not that hard to honor the degrees and the work that people have come, you know, professionals have come over with.
I'm trying to improve my work seven years, eight years so far.
Yeah. Right, right. So I know it's hard now, but I feel like if there's a bill, like, it, now that a light has been shined, if we can shine that light on it and really start working with people in power who are making these rules that make it hard and create that obstacle, then hopefully we can shift it.
Well, it's similar, I mean, there are examples, right, in our very own state, we have the TAP program for educators. That's out of Essex High School, which is an accelerated program, you know, and it takes, I believe, two, two years to get like. But it, but it costs like six to eight thousand dollars too. So there are some, there's some barriers.
Right.
But I don't see that there's any reason necessarily, I mean, I'm not a doctor, but that there couldn't be some similar paths, right, that are accelerated based on experience and competence that could be developed.
Well, I would like to just leave you with if there's anything we can do. So you keep the communication channels open. I know through Kirsten and Sean can make this a better place for all of us.
Thank you for your work too.
Yes.
It's my pleasure.
We need that bridge desperately, so it helps.
Thank you, dear.
You've set the bar high for anybody following you.
All right. Public comments?
Oh, I'm so glad I came. That was super informative and I took notes to bring back to my team over at the city, so. Just as she set the bar high, I'm waiting for a C minute.
There we go. All right. Moving on to consent agenda, I would accept a motion to accept a consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Any other discussion?
A lot of great stuff in there. Super dinner for, huge celebrations.
Indeed.
There's so many, I didn't write them down. People want some good stuff. I mean, there was, like, everything, there was tons of people doing great things.
There's always lots of good stuff going on.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, into then executive limitations. And let me just get to the, whoops, let me just get to the report, because there's just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. So in the, in the FMR, though it seems like the small favorable balance of eighteen K is a, is a real small piece. There are some bigger moving parts in there that I just wanted to highlight, just to make note of. Because you see that, you know, a small favorable balance of a tenth of a percent or eighteen thousand dollars. And then the very first sentence in the next one, we had a favorable balance of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in instructional programs. But when you dig down into that, three-quarters of more of that is a special education, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars positive. That never reaches down all the way to the bottom line only because the revenues go with them. So the expenditures are less, so you show a favorable balance. But the revenues are gonna go down because you're not providing the services that you get the reimbursement for. So there's this net down with everything as you go through. And I'll just take you through a couple of those pieces. And then, you know, instructional support, twenty thousand, some outreach services. Administrative piece favorable at sixty-nine K, operations is thirty, half of that. So again, then on a revenue side, the revenues in special education down on, you can see it pretty clearly on page, page three, under the intensive reimbursement under the special education aid. There's a, the approved budget had about two million in it and the adjusted budget's about one point seven. So you got a pretty good size drop from that. But again, it's just the services that aren't being, that aren't being performed. So the whole thing is a net drop. So just seeing three hundred and fifty thousand to the plus and wondering where eighteen K came from, it all, it all kind of walks itself together. And then the reserve account, still pending some other encumbrances here. The, I didn't see the all seasons piece of the current.
Yeah, we haven't encumbered anything for that yet.
Right, right. So that will come right off the bottom line of the, of the capital reserve. So that's the one outstanding piece of that that will, that will bring that down. And then the general fund balance and the Medicaid on page six. So, any questions on that? It sounds like we're gonna be right about in that same area we always do and at the end of the year when we tally everything up, it'll be a slightly different number, but.
Yeah, I think the one also that, you know, is relatively new and that we are, we are tracking very closely is the HRA.
All right.
You know, given that we, we got a few months left in this budget for that and we're, we're at a pretty high percentage of use already. And then six more months in the next, in the FY twenty budget.
Out of the same, oh, out of FY twenty, but, okay, right.
Yeah, so, you know, this is when, about four or five months in is when, because you're in the new year, January, is when people start using up their deductibles, their ten percent out-of-pocket expense and then we start picking up the rest of that. So that's where, you know, Rebecca's tracking that very closely. We're gonna, you know, and we, we budgeted based on, you know, some good advice and it played out pretty well last year. But again, that's a number that we will pay attention to very closely.
Right. And that, that again, just a reminder, in the budget, we had put in there about seventy-five percent of what we expected to total, if everybody took everything out, maxed it all out. And so the seventy-five percent, again, for a reference point when we do the budget again next year, we'll have that same, same reference point. So, good, thank you. Was there anything else in there that was no, that noteworthy? All right. So I would accept a motion to accept a quarterly financial management report?
So moved.
All right, any other discussion there? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay, moving down, the discussion now on a capital project committee update, Sean?
So the, the update is that, as you can see in the agenda at the end, we have a couple of events coming up this Saturday at nine AM. We have a community breakfast where we'll be doing our presentation and tours. Next Thursday, the eighteenth, we will have presentation and tours in here. And that'll be starting at five-thirty and then at six-thirty will be the showing of the I Am Here film, sponsored by the PTO. And there will be a representative from Vermont NEA who produced the film, who will be coming and facilitating a discussion after the film, which is about thirty minutes long. And I'm trying to get, I just had an email from Abdi Mohammed, who is one of our graduates, who is in the film. And he may be coming to be a part of that discussion, which would be fantastic if he, if he's able to show up. So then after that, we have a community dinner for our Wednesday, May first evening, which will be presentations and tours. And then on May sixth, we have the required informational meeting the night before the vote on May seventh. In the, in the interim, we do have some motivated community organizers who are putting together some printed materials to distribute around the city and also get some lawn signs to be put around the city.
Oh, that's great.
Leading up to the vote. And we have a handful of people who have also volunteered to do a neighborhood learning conversation in their home. They'll invite neighbors to come in and then we will have someone from, a staff member from our committee or Mike or Alex come and do kind of a presentation and discussion. And we have a whole agenda and schedule built for that for people to do. So that is what's happening. We did get also all those requirements per last Wednesday nights, all of your actions that you took on all those documents. We did get those warnings out, warnings out on Friday, which were required by law. And we have all of our schedule to dot our i's and cross our t's with all the things that need to be done to make it all legal. Ballots will be going in, will be printed and should be available April fifteenth for early voting.
All right.
Thank you for all your work and organization.
Yes, thank you very much. For the home conversations, just a little bit of heads up, I'm trying to fight off a couple of trips at work, so.
Yep.
Push those into, push those into bag.
Yep.
So, all right. We can talk, we can talk later about that, more about that in detail. Then the capital reserve for the water main, we're gonna push off until we have that closed. Hopefully that gets closed here at some point in the very near future with any luck. Compensation and benefits policy, two point seven. Again, this is another superintendent monitoring report. We've seen them several times in the past. Just from a brief history on this, this is, I think, one of the ones we ended up having one, the one non-compliance that I think I can remember. And that was on a salary investigation on something on file that was now every three years updated, if I remember right.
Number two, no, it was the.
It's on the how in a matrix of.
Which number was it? It was about getting comps.
Right, area comp, so you're, you're pretty common. So, and I bring that up only because that's just the one piece in here and that I think we now have a match to area compensations and whatnot, so. Any comments?
No, the only thing that was updated was, you know, the language in number one about my contract. And that was about in the letter from Rebecca verifying the various points. my contract. And that was about in the letter from Rebecca verifying the various points.
We got the letter.
I got the letter attached the first time, yeah.
We're working it. Good. Any, any comments here? All right. Again, as we go through time, these become a standard set in the annual evaluation when we sum them all up. So I would accept a motion to accept the monitoring report for policy two point seven compensation and benefits. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Nope, opposed? Okay, we're all good. Next, school calendar. You got a couple of, couple of things, one this year, one next year.
Calendars, calendars, calendars. Okay, so we're going to start with the current year calendar. And I'm going to say that weather wise, we're out of the woods, I think.
My garden didn't look like that this morning with snow all over it, but that's all right.
As you know, we've had a inordinate amount of days, not necessarily due to weather, but weather plus water main days.
Water main breaks?
So we have had to accommodate those days. And so basically what I am asking the board to do tonight is to approve the calendar before you, which modifies based on those missed days, that our final student day of school would be Wednesday, June nineteenth. And then on Thursday, the twentieth, that would be a in-service day. And that would give students a hundred and seventy-six days. Normally we have a hundred and seventy-seven. Both obviously are above the hundred and seventy-five statutorily required student days. And what this would also, one of the, the benefits of that is for the middle high school teachers anyway, is that they will be doing some work for a couple of days anyway. And so that Thursday would be a day that we would normally pay people additionally so we can kind of fold a day and have a little bit of savings for a lot of the GX work that the middle high school is, is doing. This is all contingent upon no more weather, no more water main break days. If there are, I would be coming back to you to make revisions to make sure that we're meeting our statutory requirements and so forth.
And from a statutory requirement perspective and a contract perspective, you know, one day, one day for the student days, still, not give it if we don't have to, but.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So our acceptance here is dropping from one seventy-seven to one seventy-six and extending to the nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
One extra day in June is not going to make up with it.
All right, so I would accept the motion to accept the updated school calendars. Sean?
So moved.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then FY twenty.
And then to next year. So this, this calendar is billed every year by, by statute. The regional superintendence group is required to adopt a hundred and seventy-five common days that we will all be in school. There are sometimes districts who will request waivers for particular days, but, and, and the regional group can grant those waivers. We did not request any waivers this year. We have in the past for some of our different holidays. And so this, this schedule or this calendar really reflects very similar beginning of the year where we start on a Monday with teachers. And then on Thursday, August twenty-second is when the rest of the, the staff, the support staff come and we do our half day and Mike comes and addresses at the consultation. And then we have our community barbecue in the evening. And then in-service day or pre-service day is on Friday, the twenty-third, Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday is our first student day. And then, as you can see, the ma, the major changes to this calendar are in October and November and then in March and April, and I'll, I'll talk about those a little bit. So starting in October, we, what we have found with parent teacher conferences was very, very difficult scheduling for the, for the cultural liaisons. So for them to serve K-12 parents over the course of really about eleven hours and, you know, eight hundred students, didn't work very well. And we were not only paying for additional support from other interpreters to come in and translators to, to do that work, but our liaisons were just, you know, I mean, that's, it's hard to do that work for that long. So Kirsten worked with liaisons and then Kirsten brought proposals back to the district leadership team. And the model that we came up with was to split them out by month, but do them by school. And we would have half days for students on those days, just like we do now. So it'd be eight to twelve fifteen. And then, for example, in October, the middle high school would have parent teacher conferences in the afternoon on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, until eight o'clock at night. And then they would do the shorter day on Friday, the twenty-fifth, and the JFK staff would have in-service. So they would do their professional work. And then you flip that over in November. What it does is we do not have those half days then that we normally have on our Wednesdays. We took those out, but they do each have then two half days over two months. So they're not losing that professional time. It's just configured a little bit differently. It also, the week of Thanksgiving is off completely as we used to come back on Monday and have conferences on that day.
And that was a regional decision to do that week?
No, that's, that's what's called a non-common day regionally, so we can choose to be in session or not.
That's great. That's a really good idea.
Yeah. So, yeah, we were, I thi, I think it's a good model and we, we shall see.
And with this, then, one of the things that we had been trying to do is hit major holidays for each of the major religions.
Right, so we, we didn't have a lot of conflicts this year. You can see October eighth, which is a, on a poly holiday where we, and we keep all of the data around attendance and that's a day that we would be missing hundreds of kids. So we have that day off. It happens to, I believe coincide with Yom Kippur, which is the, the ninth, I think begins at sundown on the eighth into the ninth. But we don't have, we don't have a, EDS do, they don't fall in the schedule this, this coming year. Yeah, because they're on the lunar calendar and so they're, they shift pretty, pretty significantly. Yeah, and so.
So we were able to still contain what we had started there.
Yes.
Try to hit the major ones.
Yep, we were. And then another difference is in January, we, in the past, we have not come back until the third usually, but we backed that off to come back on the second so that we have two days that week. And that's really fitting pieces in so that we can meet our hundred and seventy-seven days. The breaks, you know, over December, February and April are, are pretty standard in terms of what week of the month they are.
Now with, last year, I think you changed, we changed it where we took one of the, that Tuesday, so it wasn't a week and two days off because.
In March.
We had that conversation. I don't know if you noticed a difference with, this year you came back just on that Tuesday.
Right.
Right? Yeah, so I don't know if it was a difference, but it was just noticing a really long time away from food and services and all kinds of things.
So, one of the things that, that leadership heard from staff was having that professional day as we're, particularly as we're heading into testing season, was really missed this year. And so having the day where we have, have wellness day and we do work one day and then have wellness day, if, a lot of people were advocating for that.
Do.
I think there's things that we can do to fill in the gaps like we have always done in terms of food too.
Right, in terms of food access and, okay.
And then you see March and April are kind of the, you know, similar to the, to the fall months with the parent teacher conferences. And, yeah, that's about it. One, one in-service day in May instead of two, we normally had one also on a Friday before Memorial Day. Memorial Day? Labor Day? Always getting mixed up. Memorial Day, right?
Oh, there's May here.
And then that, that builds us into the last student day in this calendar being Wednesday, June tenth, with graduation on the third, Saturday, the thirteenth. So we, we looked at data around about the last eight years of closures and it averages like two point three something per year. So we, we debated whether we needed to back that out another day, you know, especially given this year. But we felt like that was a good.
And that would still give us two days that week.
It gives us two that week, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
That works out pretty well.
And then we always do have a little, we have one or two day if we, if the board approves it to back it out later.
All right, good.
People are clamoring for this calendar. Oh my goodness, planning vacations and wondering when school starts and when it ends.
Anxious to see it start already.
All kinds of stuff. It's a very popular item.
All right, I'd be happy to get it published. All right. So with that update, I would accept a motion to accept a FY twenty calendar as brought forward.
So moved.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Now you may publish.
Thank you.
Should we do this in March so people are?
If I had it ready in March, but I didn't feel ready to bring it in March, to be honest with you.
Got anything going on?
Huh?
You got much going on?
Right?
Oh, okay.
Bored.
Duly noted. All right. So with that, then it brings us to section seven here, which is our board monitoring report on the delegation to the superintendent, our policy titled three point three. So this guy is essentially, in a nutshell, instructing the superintendent on the ends for the most part and letting the, letting him do the, the rest. Any, any thoughts here? Are we doing our job? Seems like we report compliance across the board. We got questions?
Talk about policy, any policies here?
Any three-three, yep. And anything in there?
The policy three point three point four, the only question that I have, and this is once again for something for us to think about next year, is that I kind of like, don't like making changes and changing the moving kind of like ends for the superintendent from our end. And I would like maybe a statement of whether we can put a timeframe and when we expect the time change to put in, you know. How it reads now is like.
I can change it now and then put the appraisal thing together next month, change it out from underneath.
Yeah.
So you're thinking a timing of, to, to, to be in force beginning the first day of the following fiscal year, whatever the.
To be fair to, like, so my, my biggest fear is is we change the end because we're not happy and, and you have these rules for a whole year. And then just because someone's unhappy on the school board, we change it and then we evaluate on that change. That's not fair to you, like.
That's, yeah, you're right. Timing does not play into that at all, the way it's, the way it's in there now. It's a real interesting point.
It's just saying that if we change it, we have to sort of do the delegation of what we had until we, this operational.
Yeah, so this, this particular evaluation point of, of, I mean, this is of, of us, of our handling of it, but I think it goes for the same for yours as well. But it would be that this now is in force until the next time it comes up. And between now and the time we cha, the time we change it and the time we review it again, that has to be a certain amount of time. So then you have time to react and respond.
But it's not giving us a timeframe within which to allow a superintendent to make, to announce a change so that they're able to adapt.
I think this is more, this policy here is more us changing the boundary between the ends and the executive limitations. Right now, we've got the ends defined at a fairly high level and the executive limitations take up everything else. If we define the ends differently to creep into some of those responsibilities for the executive limitations, or even worse yet, I think back them out and put more pressure in the executive limitations, I don't know how we could define it too much narrower. Because that, that would be the place where you would run into the problem. I'm thinking that for, for the superintendent's sections of the executive limitations, changing the, I don't, I don't think too many of those are really dated, like this one, to make it, to make, this one speaks specifically to making changes, right?
And maybe we don't need to change the policy. We just need to add in part of the interpretation that we said we also gave the superintendent enough time.
And I think that might be the better way of doing it so that when we reread it again, once again, my biggest fear is, is we have a good thing going, so we're. Different superintendent. And, and I just don't want to undermine a, like, changing the boundaries right away. And I think if we can add that line maybe in the interpretation as part of this, or maybe we don't have to change, so we don't have to restrict us to a time limit.
I wonder, I don't know this off the top of my head, whether the ends policy speaks to that at all in terms of time, like, around the ends.
Policy which would then influence the language here. I'm not sure, but.
It was high enough level.
But I think you're right. I mean, I, and also when I think about ends and executive limitations, those are very different policies too. You know, executive limitations is very explicit in saying what a superintendent cannot do. So from a policy governance perspective, what that allows a board to do is either tighten up around somebody that they think is getting a little loose, or if the policy is, is, is pretty restrictive, to loosen the policy if they basically have the confidence and the trust in the superintendent to have a little more latitude in decision making. Ends, I think, is a little bit different, you know, because that's, that's a long ter, a longer term approach to, to work. The executive limitations is, you know, those are almost daily decisions that are happening by the superintendent.
Yeah. So and I, I, I don't know that putting it into the interpretation for me would be the pla, I'm almost thinking that in the, maybe, and we can talk about this when we bring it back because I think that in order to do this, we've discussed bringing it back and having another discussion about time. Or, or changing the policy itself, which, and again, if you take the board and change everybody, take the superintendent, change them, and you put a different hat on, would it be beneficial for the, for the stability in the district to put a timeframe in here that changes must be done? You know, nine months of reaction time in advance or, so do you want to bring this one back at some point and have that discussion? Because we've done that with one of our other policies, so I don't mind doing it.
I mean, I'm not, like you, like Sean says, you know, changing the executive limitations like that may, you know, you can kind of move and watch out on the day. But the ends is your like goal statement. I'm gonna, and it just says, the board may change its ends. You know what? I decided our end statements suck and like, we're gonna do something. Like, you built, we built the whole school policy on this and now we're gonna evaluate on a change ends? There has to.
Which you'd have to have a mass, I would assume, a massive changeover, majority at least changeover in the, in board membership for that to happen.
Right, but there's still.
Yeah, yeah. It's a risk, especially in a smaller board.
There's nothing, at least in our own instinct, but I mean, there's nothing in any of the, the modern court saying anything about timing or how we go about changing any statement at all.
All right. So I will see if we can find a place to put that back in tonight, as would be exactly to your point. Tonight, we are advising on this as it is. We're not going to change it and then update the policy. So we'll bring it back at some point. All right. I would accept a motion to accept the interpretation and evidence as written here in policy three point three.
So moved.
All right. Any other discussion? Keep having a hard time looking back. All right, all those in favor?
Oh, aye. Not paying attention anymore.
The board self-assessment, I'm assuming this was in the annual agenda at this point in time because we just went through it the last time and we had said we were going to do it quarterly. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna bypass that one this time. I don't think we had anything else in there at this point.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether you guys were going to do it this month or not, so we just included it.
No, we'll do, we'll do it quarterly. I'll get it into the regular annual agenda, but I think every three months is fine. If. If. Yep, we're gonna do, oh, did I miss that one? I did miss that one, I'm sorry. Sophia, the, the floor is yours.
So as you know, the jazz dinner is this Saturday, and the band and orchestra has, have been practicing really hard. Um, and they're providing juniors probably, because that's what we do every year. Um, this week, we have been uh doing class rotations to sign up for classes. So teachers have been um explaining their um agenda or what happens in that class, and then students will sign up, uh, knowing what they're signing up for. Um, so April is usually the annual finance week, so students learn and answer financial questions. And uh whoever does it will get um put in a raffle and they win swag bags. Um, so next is the advisory retreat, and instead of um having only the advisory leaders that were picked previously, they are opening it up to everyone. So, anyone can learn leadership skills. Uh, and this is um good to know because uh students right now, like seniors, they're, they're struggling to, and they're stressed about if they're gonna graduate on time. So I would just want you to know about that. And uh if you can do anything about it, then that'd be great.
What's, what's causing this stress?
Um, so, uh, col- early college students are didn't do their senior project beforehand, so then now they're like rushing to get everything finished. And then some seniors, they're, they weren't like consistent in math, so now they're struggling to get that finished in time. And they haven't finished IMP two, which is the requirement. So, that's why.
Down at the end of the schedule, in the time.
Uh, people wish that they were told this, or if they had like meetings with the guidance teacher or the principal, so that they knew how to graduate on time.
So it seems like there was a piece of missing information from their perspective?
Yes.
Would that normally be in the advisory? Would that seem like?
I guess people aren't aware of it before the deadline, so they don't really ask.
So one piece I would add that I know is that there are, for students who are eh at risk of not graduating uh from the beginning of the year, there are um a number of letters that go home um explaining why and what's required for them to graduate, and that's tracked throughout the year. So it would be interesting to, for me, to hear, I guess, from Leon and Heidi uh in terms of, you know, my understanding is there are several letters of communication that go home starting at the very beginning of the year, throughout the year, that kind of say, you know, here's what you need to do, and here's uh where you're, you may be falling behind. So I wonder what the gap is maybe between what um the office feels like they're doing and what students feel like they're being told or not being told.
Yeah.
Can you also give a ballpark for how many of these students are feeling this way compared to the whole senior class?
Um, should I say this? I don't know, um.
Is it like four or five who are very vocal, or is it all the senior class?
Most.
Most helps.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good information.
Yeah. That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you guys talking about anything I could tell you about it?
Anything coming up? It seemed like there was a good, like, community, do, does the high school have community meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, do you, how often do you have them?
Um, every, every, every week, how's this going? Oh, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, we get advisory points because there's this um advisory challenge, and so people go up and dance, and that's really nice to see.
Yeah, I saw some of those videos, they were great, yeah.
It's really funny, um.
And um advisories are going up and presenting every month, so it's not the same person every time, which is different from last year, yeah.
Is it a good difference?
Yeah, because everyone gets to go up, because they kinda have to.
So you're being modest, aren't you, in jazz band?
Yeah.
You didn't mention that.
Yeah.
When you said what working really hard really meant, the we was part of you, right?
No.
And what instrument do you play?
I play saxophone and flute.
Wow.
So you're not gonna be nervous if say we popped up and showed up?
I don't mind, you, you guys are supporting us.
It came last year, yeah.
It came last year, so.
Great, it's a fun dinner.
But I just wanted to make sure we recognize that we know that you have talent and that you don't have to hide behind the notion of jazz band.
I'm curious, when you, the folks I'm learning about the Iraqi culture, did you know all that already? I'm just curious if that's part of your daily experience here in the school?
Not really, because I feel like we don't learn a lot about like other world history. I learned about uh some of these history facts from taking an online course. Um, I'm, I'm taking, I'm taking AP World, so I'm learning about that there, but I feel like other people wouldn't know. So I think that if we like had these presentations for students during like community meeting, would be really nice.
I guess there's one message that I can send back to you, to um the students. I, I'm still in awe by the presentations that were done on Saturday. Like, i- i- I don't know how much more I gotta emphasize, like, that was just unbelievable. Um, and if you can just share that with the uh, with, a- and I know it's not just the four of them, I know that you're all doing these type of projects that um, like, wow. Uh, I mean, I'm speechless, I can't even put words, I'm not like, it's just wow.
Well, you both put words to it in the video that I saw on Sunday.
Oh, did you see that?
I did, some, I forget who, somebody sent it to me, cause I was away.
Yeah, 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 no, it was, it was a really thoughtful thing for the teacher, all, uh, off, um, what's his name?
Luke.
Luke, Luke, to say that, can you give us, you know, because they had to leave early, so we didn't, but what was so amazing, and I think that I'm noticing a lot of Winusi students walking away with this, is the, the ability to stand in front of people and use your voice, and to present, and to speak strongly and clearly about what you're learning, and, and then making sort of what you're gonna do and what, or what needs to be done about what you've learned. With the expos, right? I feel like it's a pretty powerful piece of, it was amazing, it's best part of the whole day, it was eight to four.
Diraj's final note was delivered with conviction, but not um accusations for any wrongdoing, it was stated clearly. And it was straightforward, without, again, without emotion, but here's, here's what we see as the issue.
What was also amazing, I think, I don't think the students realized, was watching the PTO.
Parents that were there, finally understanding what we were doing with the proficiency-based education.
And I feel like it goes back to what you were saying, is this having a bank of expos and demonstrations of learning for parents and community to access, for the ones who aren't gonna come here and watch, that we need to make them available, so they can actually see what you and your peers can do, and how that matters in the world.
And it mattered because these were the parents who are in middle school, who like, you know, we've been fighting in some ways to understand the traditional, and it was like a- a- we still had a prod and tell them like what that was about, and sh- tell them about the skills that all these students learned. But it was like a light bulb that hit their heads, and it was wonderful. And so I can't, like, say enough for what those, what your students and what you're doing in the classroom. Um, the key thing now is also, if you got, if, if the students are doing that type of quality work, I can guarantee you, you're being prepared for the world ahead of you, whether it's, whether you wanna go to college in a four-year institution, to go to a technical school, to go work in the workforce. It makes everything that I'm doing here, like, I go like, full force, like even more passion and more energy to emphasize what we do, so. I, I, I mean, if, I don't know how you can explain, I mean, I know there's videos of us saying it, but like wow.
Tell them they're still saying it. Wow, yeah.
And who, who, so is Diraj and Milan?
And Lekna and Ali.
And Ali, yeah. Ali got the best dress, for sure.
For sure. Diraj was like, whoops. I didn't dress up, but. It was wonderful, yeah, thank you for your report, too.
Yes.
And tell the seniors we hope that they get some time to get this.
There's still time.
Right, there's still time.
Plenty.
But you gotta start moving them out.
Yeah, it has to, it has to keep moving.
They can come and get one on one, okay, what else you need to do, like, do you need to make copies for this, what is it?
Alright, as we move on, um, we get then into our two policies um for review this evening. Uh, one, student alcohol and drug use, um, policy here was adopted, so we got some pretty good definition, and then the procedure is pretty uh in-depth as well. And, so Sean, let me start with, um, as, as always, thoughts on the policy that we are using now and its applicability? Any issues that you've had with it?
No, we haven't, and um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm really pleased to say that, that it is rare that we have to apply this policy, you know, which in a modern-day high school is, um, it, it beats the uh, the norms and the averages, I would tell you from my experience, so I'm just really.
Celebration point.
I'm just, yeah, I mean, I'm really proud that, you know, we have a lot of students who uh do not partake in these things, uh, and/or do not partake in them during school, and uh so, um, it is, it is a relative rarity when we have to apply this policy. And when we have, there have not been any issues, and I think the important thing is, you know, that we see this as a an opportunity to support a student and/or a family, and, you know, get uh supports around them and uh use it as a, as a real uh opportunity for growth, opposed to a punitive uh opportunity.
That's, that's what I read down through it, is it is not as much punitive as it is trying to be corrective and reparative. And that's why, oh, I wanted to mention, and I meant to mention it, you mentioned reparative, but Margaret had a, had an out-of-town uh issue that she had to attend to, and she's gone most of the week this week, so she's not with us tonight, so. I, I think that's what I wanted her to weigh in on, on one of her passions and other pieces, the reparative piece of it, so I was kinda curious about her, you know, thoughts down through this one, so. And the, a- any issues with this, I mean, that the other rendition of this did not seem to be significantly different.
No.
Um, the only one that I had a question on here, Sean, is in this new one here.
The model.
The, in the model, sorry. Um, under, under, uh, so it's page, the second page of it, there's a comment, or a section in annual report. And I didn't know if that is a new requirement, or if that is something that is, is, just to let people know, this is in a standard format provided by the Agency of Education, the superintendent, principal, or other, will submit an annual report to the Secretary of Education describing substance abuse education programs and their effectiveness. So I just didn't know if that was.
We don't have that in our system.
I didn't see that in the top one.
Down in the footnote that it's not required to be included in the policy, but the rule, it says, does require the school uh to engage and to inform the community about the drug and alcohol program, which we do. Yeah, I can take a look at that and see if there's anything that we're missing.
Alright.
Yeah, and says it could be included in procedures, no, that's a good catch, to take a look at.
I just didn't, because sometimes the, the models are, have, have things buried in them that are required, I just wanna make sure we don't miss one. Sorry.
It's good, it's thorough.
Alright, so I, I guess I would, with that, with that as the exception, just to ensure that it is not a requirement. I'm thinking we just pass the one that we have now. Um, since it isn't significantly different and it seems to be working well.
So this is the first read for these, right?
We'll put it back in through consent the next time, but
Yep.
when we do, if we can just have a quick summary on that piece.
Right, I'll check on, I can put it in my report if there's really nothing to do, or if there's a change, we can always pull it out.
Okay, and your report would be a great place, in that way they're tied together in the same batch of uh, batch of reports. Alright, good, any other comments there, any other thoughts? Alright, the last one, FERPA, Student Educational Records.
So, well, the first thing I noticed, is our policy is about twenty-five pages long.
Proceed, most of it's procedures, right?
But the other, so the, was it not with the um VSBA model policy, was, just their procedures were missing?
Think you'd have to attach the procedure to the bottom.
Prescribe procedures.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they only do the policy piece.
Okay.
And so again, here, and a lot of this is, is prescribed already, it is requirement, so is there any anything in here that you see as detrimental?
No, I mean, it's very prescriptive per, per the legal references, which is really what you go to. Um, you know, and the things that we deal with the most frequently are requests from armed forces for directory information, which we're required to provide. Um, and um typically through uh special education, when we have uh dissemination of records, like between providers or between um schools. Um, that we have to um sometimes consult this and be really thoughtful about what documentation we're providing to who, and having all of the appropriate consent forms and.
Chief archivist? Archivist, sorry.
The emphasis on the wrong syllable will certainly change the.
Change the flavor. It was on page seven?
Seven, yeah, that's, that's probably uh my assistant or me.
You need a title, you need?
Yep.
Need to add that to your.
Yeah, wow.
General overall.
It just seemed that it was also like all that data would go to the public library. I thought we were protecting records and.
No, it's a, it's a good uh, it's a good update, actually, for the, for the procedures, um, because some of those titles are not in existence anymore in our organization.
What years did we have that much money?
Well, we paid, we spent eight ni- we spent eight ninety-five for different stickers, and call it even, the guy's got six of them across his desk. It works. Although I, we digress, um.
Yeah, but on the policy side, the first couple of pages, no, I don't recommend any changes to others.
Alright, good. Alright, so we will see that one as the second reading come through, and as always, the consent next time. And then legislative update. There have been a few, I'm just, um.
So the, a couple of things that, that I know of is the ethnic studies bill was passed, that was the first piece of legislation that was passed this session. And Scott has already, uh, Governor Scott has signed off on it. Um, and there was, um, Representative Deanna Gonzalez was a part of that and some others. Um, and I think it's a great step forward in terms of uh, of equity across our state. I do have some concerns uh about the implementation and the, the the concept that legislators are, are developing curriculum possibly, makes me a little nervous.
So it's the ethnic studies bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I do, after having read it a little more closely, I think, you know, the first year or two are gonna be more focused on kind of the the higher conceptual ideas of what should be included, and then let the professionals do the curriculum development. And so I hope it will stay that way. But there was actually a lot of local people, there's a, a gentleman who uh works at the um, or owns the uh, what is it, Three Brothers Ga- you know, in the gas station up there, uh by Sunny Hollow?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I've chatted with him a number of times, and he was, he's been working on this for years. And he was so excited when I saw him a couple of weeks ago, that it finally came to fruition, so. Um, and he spoke a lot about how, you know, when his children, he's raised his children here, and I, I believe he's from uh Lebanon, that, you know, his, his children learn history and literature, and they didn't really. that, you know, his, his children learn history and literature, and they didn't really learn about themselves. And they didn't see themselves or hear about their culture in, in those studies, and so for the, you know, that was really important to him. Um, other than that, I think, um, lead testing is getting, uh, and I think you did some advocacy around that.
Right.
Um, and I think that seems to be the hot item in the education committees right now, um.
So that's lead testing in the waters and the reparations of those, if you have any issues around it. And those, by all means, it needs to be done, for sure.
Right.
We've had a lot of testing done over the winter here, so I'm sure we would've turned anything up, at least on this end of the building.
Yeah.
Do we have regular on the other side of the building as well, regular testing?
Yeah, we have regular on both sides because we're federally required, because we have, uh, Head Start, both sides of the building, that we have to do it twice a year.
Perfect, okay.
The other one is Act One Seventy-three with, which is the Special Ed, um, Finance Law, and there is heavy discussion going on right now. Secretary French was testifying yesterday, I think, um, about whether to delay it a year or not. And Secretary is saying that the agency is prepared to implement this on the timeline per statute, and the field is saying, we're not ready. So there is, BASBO, the business organization, sent, uh, a letter, um, for, for their testimony. The Special Ed, state-level special, Special Ed is advocating for a delay. So, we'll see how that one plays out, I think, I think it would be, given all of the other things that are going on, um, like the e-finance, the chart of accounts, it would be beneficial to take a little more time and do it, I think, better in a year's time than this year.
Yeah, Act Forty-six delay is still, that one got allowed for one more year?
Yeah.
I think that was the, um, that one concerns me a bit, only now we got the proficiency in place by FY twenty-twenty, and what happens when you get into February of twenty-twenty and things aren't quite ready and we need a delay and, you know, just the rules not having to bite.
No, and there's some districts just having really, really rough time, and they don't, they don't have a budget, because they don't know how to build a budget for next year, because they don't have a governance structure.
The whole piece, yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's tough for some districts. So that's all I know about legislatively.
Heard anything else. All right, off to approval of the Support Staff Contract. And this one here, we had, um, talked through in the end of eighteen. We had talked about, uh, at that point, a rollover from what we had last year, because this is a one-year contract, as we again work toward a statewide benefits, um, proposal, so, um, they accepted that as a rollover, so what's in here is what we had, and I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, that's pretty much where we ended up.
No, I mean, you're, you're right, I mean, there just wasn't any significant changes aside from, you know, getting a, a three-and-a-half percent, um, uh, increase, and the, the health insurance, uh, stayed the same, um, which they had, uh, eighty-two percent eighteen split, so it's a little bit, um, you know, the board negotiators had given them a little, a little bit more than the teachers in the last negotiation. Um, there were some, some cleanups of language and different things, but nothing, uh, of substance. Uh, the biggest thing that we, we had aimed to have this done in January, and then water main breaks got in the way, um, and then, um, also paternity and maternity leaves, and then figuring out this wage schedule in Appendix B. Um, and that will be something that I think will, in the next go-around, we'll have to work on, on, on both sides of the table. Because it's, um, it's interestingly built both, um, mathematically, uh, uh, for people coming in and based on the people that you have in the organization, so it doesn't always match up very well.
Okay.
When you're trying to do both of those things.
All right. That's what the negotiation is all about, cleaning it up over time and.
I don't know why I clocked this typo, but I'm twelve-point-two-four. It's just a weird dollar sign in the middle of, um, it says, a one-time payment equals to thirty dollars, signs the number. Is that dollar sign a typo?
No, no, that's, that's correct, so you get, for every day of accumulated sick leave, you get thirty dollars per day. So times is like multiplication.
Yeah, it just read funny to me when I read it. But I get what you're saying in that kind of framework, but yeah.
I mean, it could, it should say, I mean, easier would be maybe thirty dollars per each accumulated sick leave day, up to.
Yeah, that sounds.
We'll put that on the schedule for next year.
Yeah. I will mark it.
Uh, any other, uh, discussion there? All right, um, so I would accept a motion, and then I'm assuming the support staff has now.
They ratified on Monday.
Okay.
Monday afternoon.
Okay, so I would accept a motion to accept the Support Staff Contract as noted here.
So moved.
All right, any other discussions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good, uh, so, recent activities, uh, was very well-attended on, uh, Saturday for the diversity and, um, equity session. Uh, that was very interesting, eye-opening, and, uh, it was good to see the folks there from, from the city, school, organizations, having that discussion, your, your piece fit in well, that kinda segued right in with the rest of it. I read, uh, the letter about Winuski being home. It fit, it fit right in, yeah, it fit kinda right in at one point, that it fit well.
Did you see that Sophia, the letter?
Didn't she read, she read her, she read it at, uh, the community meeting? Becca?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 'cause if you saw the dancing, it was the same meeting, I think, as the dancing, right? Yeah.
Mike had tears in his eyes as he was reading it.
Yeah, he was.
It needed to be said.
Stressed, stressed, stressed reading the small font. I gotta get that out of me.
We could hear the, uh, the voice.
What was wonderful about it was that we're all aligned to breaking down barriers so that all people can live well-intentioned lives, and that they have the resources and the support systems and the advocacy and empowerment to do so. Yeah, so it was great to have the whole city.
Yeah, and that's, that's just one question that I'm not sure I got, Deleve seemed to, to handle it differently than a beer, uh, and that is the question of, how do those, how do concerns from their individual communities get bubbled forward so that we don't end up burying them? You know, the, I mean, a school is one place for them to come up, um, but just as a community as a whole, how do those, how do you keep those active with, with concerns that the different communities have and?
Well, I think what's, um, was wonderful was having so many of the city, um, agency, the, the city department leaders there. So, you know, Community Services there, uh, Public Works was there, there's a, they have a Development Director, Communications Director, you know, he was there, and really focused intention on making sure, like, it, it seemed that they're just as dedicated to trying to build relationships and trying to build places for people to come together and get to know each other with intentionality. And they do do a lot of data analysis on like, how many people are showing from Halloween, like this last Halloween, which was terrible weather. They had probably nine hundred people come out on, on the two days that all that was happening downtown. So they're, they're really getting intentional, and then they're noticing, I think, too, the questions are, and we've asked those questions ourselves, who's not here? Whose voices are we not hearing from? And then trying to make plans for that.
Not losing those voices is key.
Yeah, and being intentional about paying attention to who's not there, so then there can be some sort of way of like, well, then what do we do? And who do we ask to help get support, to make sure everyone feels supported? They don't have to come to all the things, but how do we make sure they feel connected? And a part of this community and can participate in a way that makes sense for where they are. So that's the conversation we had at the end of it, we, we all broke up into different groups, there was a big school group.
Yeah.
Um, and I was kinda part of the commute, like, engagement, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of great brains involved in it, yeah.
And I'm gonna emphasize that we should pay attention, because there will be other groups that are in that gap, and they will potentially lead these other new Americans to a path that we may not want, um, and.
To bring the people in that may feel.
I would just say that, uh, I, I went to, as part of the community engagement, went to the Parents for Youth for Change for the Bus Program Celebration. I'm gonna encourage us as a board next year to really go out as a group there to go in. Because A, kudos to the Parents for Youth for Change, have done a great job of bringing the new Americans, the communities that we, um, are trying to hear in their voice. But they also sometimes push a direction that, like, like, you know, they're still pushing for us to put money in the budget for the bus program. And I, no matter how many times I've said, we've put money in the bus program, and Rebecca has said that. I've asked them about pu- pulling a plug for, you know, and I've met with them before to talk about the capital planning project, but none of the new Americans knew about the capital planning project.
So maybe is it just making sure that we are bridging in to Parents Youth for Change, just to make sure that our message and their met, like, there's more, um, better interpretation of what's being done?
The message being delivered is not correct.
Right, exactly, so interpretation, yeah.
And, and it's not interpretation necessarily from the interpreters to the new American, in what I mean. And, and I think it would solidify, you know, like I said, if the board came out there sometimes to these events that they had, and I know we gotta hit, we watch out for quorum, but a three or four, that brings in the community dinners that they have, it, it, it'd be good for us to hear, like, I can translate it all to you, and I've been out there for them, and they've been appreciative, but like, they're still, and there's a direction that they're trying to push that is kind of scary, in my opinion.
Well, that's something that we should probably make sure we're bridging communication on.
I think also, um, you know, uh, Mike had reached out to Val Gardner to come back and, and work with the board on that three-year community engagement plan, which we're tentatively scheduled for the June board meeting on, and hopefully we can have a big chunk of time that. That, that's a perfect, um, kind of talking point for that conversation, I think.
And I think the materials that she provided, um, I read through them, and they, they're speaking directly to the things that we've been talking about and the conversations that we tried to craft la- last year and all of that, and just being able to look more broadly at how do we make sure we're crossing with all organizations and, and speaking clear language.
And once again, I wanna, just like, publicly, they've done a wonderful job of reaching the community, I mean, there was a good twenty-twenty-five, it was cool to watch the translation of like the Nepali and I think the Somali Bantu population be there, right? And they've gotten those folks, and they've gotten them to talk, um, the diversity of that great place. But the energy, eh, eh, you know, we're not careful of paying attention to who's not there and realizing that there are people filling in that gap. Um, because they were talking about, they're wanting more people to learn about how we, they can have more controlled Title I funds, and I really need to figure out what that is and get educated on that. Um, but we, if, if we don't pay attention, I, I think we might have to do more work later on.
It's certainly the top, uh, you know, it's our families that we need to pay attention to, make sure they're understanding.
Well, one of the things, and this could be, I think, kind of a, a city, school, district, um, uh, continuation of the summit, would be, you know, and Deek, when she was the, the city manager, she and I talked about it and just never got around to doing it, was forming some sort of a council, you know, that had school boards, city council, um, and all different, uh, cultural group representation, where not only people could kind of, you know, bring their concerns, but also get to know each other, so there'd be some cross-cultural, uh, learning. And I think a lot of that work could then drive the work that you all do.
Stories.
And into the school and so forth.
And it can harness the wisdom in, in, in our city.
Yeah.
You know, so that they're bringing, everyone's bringing in their information from the different angles they're coming into, and then we can harness that wisdom, like, and what are we gonna do and what are we gonna create with the information? How are we gonna use that wisdom?
Then it's a collective.
Wisdom is using the knowledge that you have, you know?
It's a collective path forward, rather than somebody sitting over here saying, this is where we're going. Hopefully, everybody else will come.
Yeah, it's just interesting, I mean, I think part of the reason that, that Deek and I never did it was, you know, we have board meetings, we have city council meetings, we have all these other committee meetings and everything else, so how could we be creative about whether it's using combined board and/or council time to actually do some of that work?
Because it is, we all have.
Instead of creating another thing, you know?
Right, exactly.
Our, our, some of our most effective board meetings have been when we brought in.
Right.
The colleges, the business leaders, uh, those got to the heart of what we were after a lot better. Um, I know I'm willing to, and I think you guys would agree, to spend the time in this meeting, not necessarily doing the policy, but taking tho- having those discussions, that, that, to me, is a perfect use of this time. And if we could get the city to, we can have that discussion about how do we move that thing forward, that may be. The thing that, that concerns me about our, our joint meetings is we have the MOU, we sit together in a room for five minutes, we know what it is, we do it, and it, it, it's interesting, but to take that to the next level would be, would, maybe that's the discussion we have the next time we do that.
Right, you know, and I think now, you know, with a new mayor, that might be an opportunity for you and I to, uh, you know, meet with Christine and, and Jesse and start talking about that a little bit.
Yep.
Did we respond to Christine about, do you remember? Sorry, this is capital training from the community, going back on the road with Winuski.
Yeah, no, I was, I was wondering that too, if you guys were gonna do that.
You wanna do it, Mike? I will talk after.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you, you've got me with a blank stare here, so, I apologize, I might've missed something.
So that was community activities.
Yes. Newsletter topics, yes. She's gonna move.
Next.
So I've got this newsletter, um, it's coming out right before the vote, so I'm gonna finish that one up tonight and get it out, uh, it's due, um, Friday.
I think we said Margaret should do it.
I think Margaret, because she now had a couple of, a couple of times behind her. So I will, um, and, and do we have a topic, or we just have her intro, her and her view of the first, her first couple of?
Introduce yourself or.
That would be, yeah, she'll have the May meeting at that point, but just barely.
So it'd be for June, that she would write?
It would be the June, but, but by the time our May meeting comes in, she will have precious little time, it'll be, like, our meeting, usually the deadline is two days after our meeting.
Right, right.
So.
That's a good time to also say something to the graduates and the good students, as we head off into the summer for her.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, so I, I'll reach out to Margaret then and, and start planting that seed, so she's ready. Um, I have not updated the, um, I have not updated the, um, schedule here, so I will get that, uh, add Margaret in here, get that going.
And I know, um, Ann.
Get that back to Ann.
Ann would like that.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause then she can send out there.
Is it done yet, emails? She's so gracious.
Yeah, I just, I know, I just copy and paste my monthly, can I have forty emails?
How about?
See, the fascination isn't only for high school students.
That's right.
Exactly, it's like, when's the deadline? Can I have two days after that?
Everybody's got that.
All right.
Yes, okay, uh, down into lots and lots of stuff on the calendar here, coming up with a Capital Project Tours, the Jazz Dinner, um, I Am Here, Spring Recess coming, woo-hoo! Um, and then, uh, informational meeting in the.
Didn't put the vote, oh, we didn't put it yet.
On the.
Oh, we didn't put it on there.
On the seventh, right?
Right.
May seventh to vote?
Yes.
Yep, sixth is the same thing we do the night before, and I mean. All right, anything else? I would accept a motion to move into executive session to discuss, uh, labor negotiations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session, I give you guys three minutes if you want, otherwise this will meet in the I-Lab very briefly, and we're, be ready to go, done that.